I am. Good evening.
I can read.
I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for March thirteenth, 2023, to order. We are going to go into executive session in a moment, but we will be returning to open session no later than 6:00 P.M. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
If you may. Michael, let me start with the first item pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, and the chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining positions, SEIU. The second item is pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation involving forty-seven North Road if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll poll vote. Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I am an aye. It is a vote, and I so declare.
Should I watch that?
Good evening. I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, March thirteenth, 2023, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session. First topic was strategy with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, if there would be a detrimental effect to talk about in public. And that was related to SEIU, and there was no decisions made. And then, second was respect to litigation involving forty-seven North Road if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. Decision was made, but since it was litigation, we will not be announcing that tonight. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Public comment announcement?
Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. I'm here with just a few reminders for you and for the public this evening. There is still time for anyone interested in running for office for the May 2023 Annual Town Election. Election Day is Tuesday, May sixteenth, 2023. Four elected offices will appear on the ballot. There are two seats each for the Board of Selectmen, Monomoy Regional School Committee, Water-Wastewater Commission, and Brooks Free Library Board of Trustees. We have nomination papers available in Clerk's office. The deadline for folks to obtain nomination papers is Friday, March twenty-fourth. Our office will be open until 5:00 P.M. that day. The deadline to submit nomination papers with signatures is Tuesday, March twenty-eighth. The requirement for all offices is to get fifty signatures from registered Harwich voters, and we recommend folks get at least a few additional in case we're unable to certify any of those signatures. Second announcement, our office had implemented a grace period, if you will, for dog license late fees. That grace period is set to expire this Friday, March seventeenth. So, we encourage anyone who has not yet made it into our office to license your dogs to do so in the next couple of days. If not, you will be subject to that $25 late fee per dog. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else for public comment announcement? Julie?
The agricultural, sorry, I'm reading the list of open committee vacancies. Agricultural Commission, we have three full and one alternate. Capital Outlay Committee, Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Appointee, we have two. Community Center Facilities Committee, one. Conservation Commission, one alternate. Council on Aging, two. Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee, two alternates. Harwich Cultural Council, one. Harwich Energy and Climate Action Committee, two alternates. Harwich Housing Committee, one. Historic District Historical Commission, two full members and one associate member. Planning Committee, one, which is upcoming. Real Estate and Open Space Committee, one. Voter Information Committee, three. Youth Services, one full, one alternate, two. And Zoning Board of Appeals, two alternates.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone else for public comment announcement?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
We received word today from Monomoy Regional School District that kindergarten registration is now open. It started May sixth and runs through, excuse me, started March sixth and runs through March twentieth, 2023. Anyone interested in signing up their child, who will be age five by September first of 2023, should contact Monomoy School District either on the website or by phone at (508) 430-7216. And again, this is regarding kindergarten registration for the 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Consent agenda? Any motion on the consent agenda?
Can we pull out the February twenty-seventh separately?
You want to hold February twenty-seventh?
Well, there's a couple things wrong if you would rather hold it, because I can make changes.
Why don't we read A first, and then we'll make those changes?
Okay.
You can do them individually.
Sure.
Sorry. I should know by now, Jamie.
Just shout. I knew we were in trouble, because she stood up. I could see her.
Go ahead, Don.
I move that we vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, one, for February twenty-seventh, 2023, with amendments that I'll be bringing up after this. Two, March fourth, 2023, Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen Joint Budget Meeting. B, vote to approve the Assistant Town Administrator's recommendation to grant permission by N-Star Electric Company, D.B.A., EverSource Energy for the purpose of installing their thirty-foot plus or minus, what is that? One or?
One to three inches.
One to three-inch conduit, okay, from the proposed handhole, 289 H82, to a customer-installed handhole, 289 HB2 at eighteen Holmes Road. And C, accept the following committee resignation effective immediately. Dwayne "D" Lepore, Council on Aging, with our gratitude for her service.
Second.
Moved in second, and thank you, Don. Discussion, go ahead, Don.
Yeah, it's page four of...
February meeting minutes.
Yeah, the February meeting minutes. Where is it? Here. Maybe we can hold that back, because I don't have it readily available. I didn't mark it up here.
Who seconded the motion?
I did.
Julie, do you mind if we remove A, number one, February twenty-seventh, 2023 minutes?
No, that's fine.
It pertains to the school and the disparity, and I don't want to have that left unclear going forward.
That would be redacted from your motion, correct, Don?
Sure.
So, for the public, we've removed consent agenda, approved the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from February twenty-seventh, 2023, and they'll be back next week. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. New business, approve the following committee appointments. Can I get a motion on that? Larry?
Sure. I move we approve the appointment of Harry months to the Pining Board from alternate member to full member expiring June thirty, twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, Joe?
Thank you.
B, disposition of Auburn House, seven twenty-eight Main Street. This was a placeholder. Joe, do you have anything specific on this?
Not at this time. I'm working with Brianna Powell, our housing advocate, on a potential discussion with the board. But just the other reason we're putting it out there is folks had thought that this property was under the control of the trustees of the Housing Trust Fund. It remains the control of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
So, we can hold that off if you want.
And just for the public, we are talking about this with our Youth Services Director announcing a retirement, and we've discussed two oh four Sisson Road as a potential option for that position. We also did hear last week that that property was under the care, custody, and control of the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust. It is not, and to what Joe mentioned, our new housing advocate has a proposal for the board on potentially doing some housing in there. But we will hear all of that in the future. Discussion on FY twenty-four Department Operating Budgets. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, I'd rather hold off on this to go to the articles first, if that's all right. It's meant to be all-inclusive, and other than that, I will tell you that the packet material, there was an error and it cut off the last two pages, I believe. Secondly, the date in there should not be February twenty-first, but should rather be March fourth, and the column that reads 2024 FinCom is supposed to indicate what was done on March fourth, not necessarily that it's the FinCom's budget. But I can tie back to that as we go to the articles, if that's acceptable.
Okay. So, you'll want to combine that, some of that at least, with the draft articles?
Correct, under item E of new business. Yep.
Okay. Board members, any questions or concerns right now?
Nope.
All right, coming back. D, FY twenty-three personal bylaw, FY twenty-three salary tables. Joe?
So, in the packet, you'll see the memorandum from our Assistant Town Administrator, and as you heard at the budget meeting, so the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, let alone the federal government, has been impacting the minimum wage standards, and so the town needs to be in compliance with that, and that's what the memorandum shows, and that's what I would request, is that the board approve the compensation table related to, as you can see in the memo, it relates to part-time workers, seasonal grade workers of grade three, and seasonal grade workers, grade four. So, that's mostly folks that work in the library, the elections, and recreation, and summertime positions. And again, this is to make sure that we are in compliance with the state and federal minimum wage requirements.
Thank you. Questions from the board, Don? Larry? Can I get a motion?
I just move that we accept the recommendation of the Town Administrator for the personal bylaws in fiscal year twenty-three presented in the salary tables.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero. Draft Articles Presentation, Joe.
Thank you, and thank you for that vote.
Before we start this, Joe, I would just say to the board members, tonight, I'd like to at least vote to place in warrant. We don't have to do them all, but the motion wouldn't be a number. It would be a motion to place, take the first one, town officers and committees in a warrant in the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. If it's something that's simple, that we know that we're gonna support, and we want to make a motion to support, we can make a motion to support. Some of these numbers aren't correct, I don't believe, on the tables. Elected officials, it seems perfect to me, but town operating budget, we still have some work to do on that, so placing it into the warrant is fine, voting to support it, we don't know what we're supporting yet. So, I'd like to get through putting them in the warrant at very least tonight. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, you stole my words right out of my mouth. I would agree with you. I would ask, actually, that you hold off on any endorsements. The effort tonight is to get the warrant as framed out as possible so it can be shared with staff, legal, and the Finance Committee. We would expect to come back next week at your meeting to hear from proponents and others, and then have the board move to the position of taking actual endorsements. And what we'd be looking for this evening would be a motion to place the article described as town officers and committees, and so on and so forth. So, the header that you see there is what we're looking for, and as you said, we're not looking for any numbers of any sort, neither article numbers nor the tables that are in there. Those were informational, and they update based on new information.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joe. Anything else?
Just that, what you should have in your packet are at least, it's really four different packets, but the first one says list of articles to be placed in the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and these are items that folks have been working on with council or with staff or have been submitted to administration previously. That is a twelve-page document. Following up on that document, you'll have a list of CPC articles, and again, these are just the placement of the same. Then there is a one-pager, that is some capital items, and then you have the document known as List of Potential Borrowing. And last but by no means the least, you have the petitioned articles in their original form as submitted. So, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is just go through the list, but every now and then, I'll make a recommendation to hold, some of the language has changed, or to place.
So, to save time, shouldn't we, you can start off on each one of them individually, but I think we should just vote them as we go.
Yep. So, then, if I could, I would ask the board to vote to place town officers and committees into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Don was the motion, Mary was the second. Any discussion?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero.
Thank you. I would ask that the board place reports of town officers and committees into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And Joe, just to keep this simple, if Don's gonna, why doesn't Don move the motion and Mary second it so that, for the records, we know who did them all?
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm just doing the header then, Joe.
He can read it, and you can say so moved. I'm fine with that.
Either way.
But I just want the record to show that you're making the motion.
Okay, fine. Keep going then, so that we stop short of the numbers.
Thank you. I'd ask the board to place into the warrant elected official salaries.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you. I'd ask the board to place into the warrant the document Town Operating Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Joe, I have one on this. We're not getting into numbers, but just so that you're aware of, the first question I'm gonna ask is the, where did it go? Under Town Operating Budget, where it lists the operating budget, it says overlay surplus two hundred thousand, and I believe that to be a new line item that we've never discussed. Can you look into how that got there and why?
I can respond if you'd like.
Go ahead.
So, what the table is meant to get to is the various different sources that we use to fund Article Four Operating Budget. So, that table has items that tie back to Appendix B, and the Appendix B part is what was omitted from your packet. But, long story short, it's how we get to the departmental budgets, principal and interest on debt service, and then other items. Overlay surplus is one of those items that has been in Appendix B before, but has not been broken out in the table. The purpose of this table and the Appendix B is to show upfront, first, the total cost of the article, and how we come to fund it.
Okay. So, that's been in there before, just not in the table?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, move on.
And that was adopted?
Did we vote that? We voted that.
I thought we did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, I would ask that the board vote to place the article header, Monomoy Regional School District Budget, into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I would ask that the board vote to put in the article Cape Cod Regional Technical School District Budget into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero. If any board member has any questions on any of these, feel free to ask when we get to discussion. And that also means the public, anyone that has a question. Tonight, we're really just voting them to put them in the warrant. We're gonna get into debate on them starting next week. Mary?
And we're not talking about the numbers.
And we're not talking about the numbers.
We're just talking the articles.
Placeholders.
That's correct.
Was that adopted?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again.
I thought so.
I read it on that one three times.
Thank you. Belt and suspenders, I would ask that the board vote to add the Water Department Budget article into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero.
Thank you. I would ask that the board vote to put the wastewater department budget article into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'd ask that the board vote to put the fund Cape Cod Community Media Center article into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero.
Thank you. I would ask that the board vote to put in the items funded from the cable fund article into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I would ask that the board vote to place the Child Care/Early Intervention Support Program article into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. This is one that we have not talked about much, so why don't we have a little discussion on this? Julie?
So, the only thing I would say is that I'd like to clarify, and I don't think we want to put early intervention support, so I think, yeah, so I'll look to a better title for that, because what we're really trying to do is defray the cost of early childhood education from three on up, not intervention, so we need to retitle that.
Joe, clear on that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Larry?
Well, when it's time, we have a number in there. I just like some curve where that number came from. I'm not for or against it, I just, you know.
Before we get to discussion point.
Not for or against the budget yet either. Don, go ahead.
Pretty soon we need to be. The other thing is, it's not merely to fund administrative and program management costs. As we were talking about it, that would be money that would be portable to defray the cost when a parent decides to bring their child someplace.
Right.
So, it's not going to a bureaucracy of some sort. That needs to be cleaned up a little bit.
Yeah, and if I can respond, so Larry, the two hundred and fifty thousand came from, and we can talk about this more later, but as we worked on trying to get different numbers from the early childhood education specialists, you know, in town, it was difficult to figure out how many kids, and how many kids might actually already be getting some assistance. So, we kept going back and forth, and then we said, we should just pick a bucket and see what we can do, because we know that we have more kids than, say, Chatham has. So, that's really where it came from.
I'm fine with it. I was just curious, because it looks like a...
Mary?
And should it say tuition reimbursement?
Yeah.
Because isn't that what it's intended for?
Yeah, so I'm gonna look at this and just kind of revise it to Joe.
What I was looking for is that this and then another article are meant to be placeholders?
Yeah.
To at least put it in the framework of the warrant, you can make any changes as we go forward.
Yeah, great.
Before this gets sent to anyone, can we tweak that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Five, zero?
Thank you. I would ask that the board vote to place the article known as Fund Technology Enhancement for Brooks Free Library into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I would ask that the board vote to place the article known as Amend Cemetery Regulations into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion, Larry?
Yeah, I do have one. In the past, has that been from, did that come from the board, or does that come from the Cemetery Commission?
Cemetery Commission.
This request. I think it's come from the Cemetery Commission.
I haven't seen that, but I can change that.
Well, double-check my memory, but I think in the past, that's come from the Cemetery Commission.
Very good.
I think so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero.
Thank you. So, the next one, special legislation, I've heard from the Water-Wastewater Superintendent, he was working with council on that. It's my understanding that they do not want that language to go forward, so I would ask you to disregard that one. The next one in the documents that you have was a prospective amendment to amend the general bylaw regarding Chapter three hundred, Water Conservation Bylaw, and that was relative to fines and fees. I would ask the board to hold off on that. The Water-Wastewater Superintendent is working on two distinct articles from the Water-Wastewater and is working with council, and as of print, we did not have that information. So, I could then ask you to draw your attention to the packet material, and if you can bring yourself to page eleven. And again, this is under the category of placeholder, but as you may recall, there was discussion about three seventy, the bog at three seventy-four Main Street, and it was mentioned at the budget discussions on March fourth that there might be an article, so this is meant to be a placeholder, and I would just leave it to the board as to how you want to proceed on the placeholder.
Which page are we on, Joe?
Page eleven, and this is vote to rescind Article eleven of the two thousand special town meeting.
Okay, I didn't, I read that, didn't remember. I didn't go back and relook at Article eleven, so maybe you could, maybe, Michael, we can just give some background on what Article eleven is.
Yep. Joe, can you give some background on this?
So, Article eleven at the two thousand special town meeting is when town meeting voted to acquire, I believe, the bog at three seventy-four Main Street and then do a disposition of it. So, this was the original action that led to the town having a bog at three seventy-four Main Street.
Larry?
Okay.
Good, Don?
I'm fine.
Mary?
Well, I don't exactly understand that we're looking to rescind that article, but aren't we looking to get that education component going somehow or other?
Joe?
And somewhere, there's a petition article.
Yes. Joe, go ahead.
I was directed to have an article created for placeholder purposes. This is the placeholder purpose.
This is the placeholder for the petition or article?
No, no, for the board to discuss, and it may relate to other petition articles.
Oh, okay.
This is not something that staff is recommending, it's rather to put it out there for the board's discussion.
Discuss, okay.
And this is a bit confusing, so I'd say we hold off on this tonight, because there's zero explanation. Joe, we won't just be rescinding the Article eleven, because that would just do away with the purchase if we're rescinding the actual art. We're trying to change...
Jurisdiction?
And take off the handcuffs that were put on us by that article. Is that more accurate?
I can accept that, yes.
Jurisdiction, so that we could get to where we want to go.
Right. So, Joe, if we could bring this back a little more refined with an explanation, I'd feel a lot more comfortable voting it. Though, as I said to the board last week, I see no reason why we have to have an article Though, as I said to the board last week, I see no reason why we have to have an article or a petition article and why we can't in- enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Cape Cod Regional Tech School to have an agricultural education center at the Main Street Bog since we all agree on that and that we've done agriculture there for twenty-two years. Adding a word behind it seems to have gotten lawyers in a frenzy. And I think it's been completely overcomplicated, but I'll, I'll leave it at that and hope that you bring something back that makes more sense. Thank you, next.
Thank you, I would ask that the board vote to place the article that is Accept Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one ten A into the warrant.
I'll, I'll move that, but I'd love an explanation for what it means.
I'll, I'll second with the same request.
Moved and seconded for an explanation.
I offered this article in a conversation with our town clerk, and I think someone that was a former town clerk might have recommended it. With all of the various elections that the Commonwealth tends to call, if certain dates fall for registration and other things, if a town has not accepted this statute, it requires staff to be present on a Saturday. And so most municipalities in the Commonwealth have adopted this, and that lets the town clerk determine that the hours would be Friday and not Saturday.
We have our town clerk in the room.
Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk, I'll offer just a tiny bit of context. It actually would not even apply to state and federal elections. This would only apply to the voter registration deadlines for local elections. We don't typically see a lot of folks coming in in person on the Saturday voter registration deadline, and folks would still be able to register online on Saturday, which is how we see ninety-five plus percent of our voter registration submissions come in at this point. So really, it's just saving the, the town resources to staff the office on a Saturday where we don't see many, if any, folks coming in to partake on that deadline.
Thank you. Questions, Julie?
No, that makes sense to me, as long as we're not curtailing any kind of access, I don't have a problem with that, if we're just covering ourselves.
Makes sense.
Don?
Or we could get her a mattress and have her just stay the whole weekend.
Larry?
No further comment.
Any other disc- any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Thank you. Um, this next one, before I read it, I just wanna draw your attention to the parenthetical note at the bottom. I'd need to confirm in a meeting that I have later this week with the town of Chatham that they would have identical language. Um, and so this is getting to the proposed amendments to the regional agreement, and the language that has to be confirmed is that the prospective documents showing the changes would be on file in the clerk's office. Regardless, I would ask that the board vote to place the article known as Amendment to the Agreement Between the Towns of Chatham and Harwich with respect to the formation of a regional school district into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Thank you. Uh, next, I would ask the board to place the article, promote the town of Harwich into the warrant, and tell you that this item, the next item, and the one following, so the next three, uh, used to be petitioned articles, but administration and the board endeavored to support these organizations by having the board place these articles directly on the warrant.
Thank you, so you're gonna, you recommended already?
You did.
Did we get a?
So moved.
Did we get a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Thank you, the next one, similar nature, is I'd ask the board to place the article known as Supplemental Annual Allocation of Mass Cultural Council for Local Cultural Council Grants into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you, and the last in that category, I would ask the board to place the article known as Defray the Expenses of the Chase Library and Howard Court Library into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Uh, next, I would ask the board to place the article known as Annual Departmental Revolving Funds Authorization into the warrant.
This is on the other side of my bright line, so somebody else has gotta make the motion.
Larry? So moved?
Yeah, so moved, although I'm with Don, I want, I, I want, this, I have some discussion when we get going forward, but it'll, I want it on the town warrant.
Mary, you're still seconding?
Yep.
Okay, so for the record, Larry made that motion, Joe. Mary seconded it. Uh, we can just start discussing now to give the town administrator a hint of what we're looking for, and I'll start with Larry.
Uh, sure, my, uh, you know, if you discussed this before, it's, it's gotten to be, I've, I've added up and I left it at home, but it's gotten to be real money in terms of all that's going into revolving funds. But my main, uh, my main point on this was, we had an excellent presentation last week about the two oh four system of the cultural center with, you know, expenses and revenues and so on. And I'm a little concerned about putting that in the revolving fund because that's, that's, that turns into a pretty significant operation in town. And when it's in a revolving fund, it doesn't have, we, secondly, we don't see that as a budget item going forward for discussion. It's kind of hidden, and I think when we look at our revolving funds, uh, you know, if I talk about recreation, for instance, it wasn't to supplant, uh, hiring people for recreation department and all that, it was a, it was a mechanism taking fees to pay for specific programs. And so I would, uh, especially after of all this information, I, I don't think that, that the two oh four system should reside in a revolving fund. I think we, it should become part of a department like all, all our others.
Thank you, Larry, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, mine's more in the nature of a headline rather than going into any one line item. We're at about one point three million dollars that's no longer shown up in any budget anywhere, it's in the revolving funds. And the revolving funds, while they may be looked at, aren't looked at in the same way, aren't approved by town meeting by appropriation, and things that you should be able to forecast shouldn't be there. I mean, they should be for unforeseen circumstances, if they needed to buy two more teams t-shirts at Rec and Youth, but it shouldn't be funding and growing with programs if, if there's a known, uh, figure that they could fund in the general budget.
Mary?
Didn't we have, I, I get Larry's concern about SISIN because that's, although they had a revolving fund last year, I wanna say it was two hundred, not three hundred.
No, it was three hundred.
Was it three?
It was, yeah.
But didn't we have a big review of revolving funds a year or so ago and conclude that they were okay?
So Mary, we've had a lot of reviews in a row, all of them. This is something that we've talked about every single year that I've been here, at very least. Last year, I had, I, I put it on the agenda three times with no comments or no decision from the board, other than they thought it was high, but no recommendations whatsoever to, to lower them. We have an annual audit, the revolving funds are looked at, and the auditors say we're doing a great job and everything's great. To Don's point, since he's been very consistent on this as long as I've served with him.
My ghost will be in future.
And, and we did talk about this once this year already, where Dana DeCosta and Don Howell are going to get together and talk about, make some recommendations on revolving funds. And I think at this hour, Larry, to your point about SISIN, it's great, and I love that we talk about two oh four SISIN Road every week. We don't bring in enough money right now to matter. And it's, we put three hundred thousand on there as a limit. It would seem to me that we would let it operate for a year, and if, if all of a sudden the relapse, like Don talked about in REC, started to happen, then we pull it out. But the, the great news is we get to vote this every year. Nothing has changed from last year, and here we are in the twenty-fourth hour talking about it again with no suggestions. And it is kinda like banging my head on the table.
Well.
Don?
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Chair, you can stop banging. Dana and I have been talking, we're not prepared to actually make any substantive recommendations, so it would be the whole view to just move on.
Next year?
Next year.
Okay. Larry, back to you.
Yeah, I, I think what's changed for me is, is, uh, we're much smarter than we were a week ago.
Speak for yourself.
You can expand on that.
Wanna vote, wanna vote on that?
I'll expand on that, because we've been, uh, you know, revolving funds, we, I agree, we've always looked at their accountability, they go through the treasury and so on. But, but I meant by my comment is, we had a great review last week on our proposed budget going forward and that we could oversee and we can look at, does that meet our required, is that the direction the board wants to go to? And I think that should be then become part of our overall departmental discussions because we know more, and we have data coming in that we all thought was good. Yeah, it was well thought out, it was well presented, and the, and the not, and to keep that sort hidden in revolving fund, you know, when you look at the, basically revolving funds from our perspective, our being selectman, who's always been looking at the back end, can we, can we count, is our accounting department keeping track of the funds? Fair enough, and we've agreed with that, I've agreed with that. But I think in this case is, we should take this opportunity to, to have the board selectman involved formally on what's going on. Especially now we're set up to do so, we weren't, uh, actually weren't, I know it's being worked on, but I would argue we didn't have that information a couple weeks ago. We do have that now.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so if I'm fortunate enough to get reelected, I'm sensing that your volunteer hearing to be the elder statesman along with Dana and I to go through these numbers, because we're not gonna be doing this in the next three weeks, we're just not.
We have a lot of jobs for Larry after he resigns, when he's done with the board.
Well, number one, I'm not an elder.
Back to Mary, let's move, let's keep moving along, Mary, anything on this one?
No.
Julie?
I, I don't have a problem with the revolving funds, I really don't, I think that lets them do their jobs.
Sorry.
Town Administrator?
So just in response, um, this is a standard article that you have every year and is required to comply with the bylaw, which is chapter eight. So chapter eight, and there's a typo in there, so it should say pursuant to section eight point two. So eight point two in the bylaw says expenditures from each revolving fund set forth herein shall be subject to the limitation established annually by town meeting or any increase therein as may be authorized in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and one half. What you may recall from years past is there was typically two articles that related to revolving funds, and the first one tended to amend, uh, chapter eight and specifically chapter eight point one, which is the funds that are listed and their purposes and their designees. This article is meant to comply with the town's own requirement of what do you wanna set the spending limit at?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero? Of putting it in the warrant?
I'm just making a
Sorry.
A philosophical vote here, may.
All right, four to one about putting the, putting the required article in the warrant.
Uh, thank you, right below that, you'll see the customary article, so I would ask that the board place the article known as Herring Fisheries into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Uh, thank you, very quickly, before I move on from this document, um, just to note that there are some more articles that are still going to be presented to you. Uh, the first three there listed are relative to zoning bylaw amendments, and again, there's a stronger requirement on how those are handled with regard to disposition by the Attorney General. So those articles will be presented to you by the town planner next, or excuse me, the Director of Planning and Community Development next week specifically, so that you can place those. Uh, also on the list is a potential personnel list of positions. Again, this comes out of the discussion with Finance Committee, uh, still working on a supplemental funding article related to Judah Eldridge. And then, of course, we're still waiting to see if there's going to be an article related to unpaid bills from prior years. So, um, that concludes the first list, which is meant to capture.
Pop back up to petition articles? Those are in the warrant regardless, we don't have to vote those.
The petition?
All we can do is actually take position for or against, we cannot remove them.
So the petition articles, we don't, they don't have to come back, we will hear from them, but those are in the warrant, right?
Traditionally, the board still votes to place them in the warrant, you're compelled to do so, it would be a strong action to take. Um, but I wasn't there yet, I was still talking about the bullet points.
Okay.
On the, on the bottom of page twelve of the first.
Before that, it says petition articles will be presented separately.
Oh, sorry, the headline there, right, presented separately in your warrant, uh, excuse me, in your packet, which is at the end of this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that. So that concludes what are tend to be some general or standard articles. Uh, the next one, if the board wants, you could go to the list that says List of CPC Articles for two thousand twenty-three Annual Town Meeting. Um, I will tell you that there was an inadvertent omission, there is an additional article that would be related to a community preservation funding for the various war memorials, so that will be coming next week. But the articles that you see there have been reviewed by CPC, and these all reflect the current votes of CPC. So we would just be looking to have the board place the various articles into the warrant.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you, so I would ask the board to place the article known as Community Preservation Act Land Bank Debt Service Article into the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Thank you, next one would be for the board to place the article known as Community Preservation Act Appropriations and Housekeeping Expenses into the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, next would be for the board to, uh, place the article known as Community Preservation Act Hammering River Land Preservation Project into the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you, next would be for the board to place the article known as Community Preservation Act Funding Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund into the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Um, I have a little on this one, uh, I am agending next week for the board's, um, to support asking the CPC committee to reconsider this vote and to give the five hundred thousand that they've given the past two years. And I would urge the board members to watch the meeting, but as we continue to scream about housing in Harwich, listen to the, the conversation, and then the next motion that brought the two fifty to the table, it's a bit punitive to me because of some dysfunction that was happening in the housing trust that has been, that we've started to address at very least. But to take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, which one of our, our, uh, main housing, uh, people that constantly scream pro-housing was one of the ones that was against it. But to, yeah, it's interesting that you're shaking your head up and down like that, I'd be embarrassed. But it, it's, um, to talk about housing and then to, to take the knees out from the housing people to be able to do something and the housing trust to do what it was supposed to do seems a bit off to me. So I'll put that back on the agenda, and anyone that wants to, uh, come forward can come forward.
Before you move on.
Go ahead, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to add one thing, I mean, I, I don't wanna get into the dysfunction part, but they need to be able to bank the money and hold the money for unanticipated projects. This isn't like we know that something's gonna happen in three years, so we need X amount of money. This is, something just came up, it's town meetings ten months from now, we have to be able to jump on it. So that part of this is daunting too, any funds left unspent in this article are to be turned to the Community Preservation Act funds at what point? I mean, the, the, the way the trust is written, it's a one-way trip. It goes in and only the trust can disperse it, you can't say, I want what I gave you two years ago back.
Right, and regardless of what happened, it's time to move on.
May I speak to that, as a person?
You wanna speak as a resident, you can speak as a resident.
Just as a resident, Elizabeth Harder. Um, I believe that one of the concerns is that there is no plan for the money. There has not been a plan presented. The, the, uh, request to the CPC was give us five hundred thousand dollars. And I believe that it's not beyond any committee's, um, jurisdiction if they're being asked for money to know what they're giving the money to. And as much as the Affordable Housing Trust is an important, very important part of housing in Harwich, it's not the only part of housing in Harwich. And we need to make sure that if next year somebody comes to us with a program to build, build a house for veterans or something, that we have that money available.
Well, at this point, you're speaking, at this point, you're speaking for CPC, not yourself.
In my opinion, that's what the CPC should do.
And I'll just speak as a, as a board member, the trust to say that there's no plan is ridiculous. The plan is the trust documents and what the, what it was. We have forty-three houses coming off the shy list this year. We could use that money to buy our way back into those forty-three so that we're not going backwards on our ten percent from the state. And none of this came out in any discussion with CPC. So like I said, I'm gonna put it back on the agenda, and at that point, if you wanna have a meeting, a joint meeting, you can have all the members come and post it, we can talk about it. To me, we have a mission, and the mission was what the taxpayers of this town voted when they voted the trust so that we didn't have to go back to town meeting to ask for appropriations for the things that came up, as Selectman Howell said. So we're trying to move forward, and in my opinion, in my ask of CPC, and it's only an ask, is to reconsider not funding that. But I would also look back at the documents, because to stand here even as a resident and say there's no plan, there's a plan.
Perh- as a member of the public, having looked at the CPC site of, um, proposals, there is no plan in the ask for five hundred thousand dollars. I think buying back property as a person sounds like a great idea, this is the first I'm hearing about.
Thank you.
Um, Michael, if I may, uh,
Larry?
I, I don't want, this is not a time for a debate, but I've had, 'cause I had some discussions too about the plan. But I think, uh, we, we needed to discuss because that's a misunderstanding of the housing trust. Housing trust is a place for us to deposit money if something came up that was available to us. And so we need to, I think, our meeting, if you put it on the agenda, part of that meeting would be education of what the purpose was initially, because I think that's gotten lost.
Thank you, Larry, Mary, anything?
Nope.
Julie?
Nothing.
All set? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Thank you, next one is the article known as, uh, Community Preservation Act Lower Cape Housing Institute, asks that it be placed into the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Thank you, I'd ask that the article known as Community Preservation Act Brooks Academy Renovations be placed in the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you, I would ask that the article known as Community Preservation Act Preservation of Two oh three Bank Street Old Fire Station be placed in the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Uh, thank you, I would ask that the article known as Community Preservation Act Oak Street Bike Path Crossing Lights be placed in the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you, I would ask that the article known as Community Preservation Act Senior Softball Fields Restrooms be placed in the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Thank you, I would ask that the article known as Community Preservation Act Resurfaced Courts at Brooks Park be placed in the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Five zero?
Thank you. I would ask that the article known as Community Preservation Act Additional Funding San Pond Restroom Project be added to the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Thank you, and I, I would ask that the article known as Community Preservation Act Skinn Equipped Pond Remediation Project be added to the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero?
Thank you, and I would ask that the article known as Community Preservation Act War Memorials Project be added to the warrant? And again, the specific language will be provided next week.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, discussion, go ahead, Don, and I'm an aye, five zero?
It will be five zero, but ultimately, the only discussion, because, uh, I'm aware of this, that, uh, she called me today. The CPC did in fact vote for this, so it's not that we're waiting for something from them, we need a placeholder in any event.
Thank you, Don, and you're an aye?
I'm an aye.
Five zero?
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, next that you have in your, uh, packet, I believe, is a document that is, it's a two-page document that reads List of Draft Capital Articles, uh, with the omission of the word B, to be inserted into the two thousand twenty-three Annual Town Meeting warrant, um, but I'd like to, uh, But I'd like to preface this, if I could. You may have heard me make reference to the fact that there is any number of ways that the articles could be presented. What you'll see there in the outline is, I believe, 24 separate projects that are broken down and presented to you by funding source. And so this is a policy discussion, I would argue, and something where I would ask direction of the board. I can certainly do standalone articles. Again, if we do that, we're probably doubling the warrant, but that's just a fact and not an opinion. So I would just look for direction from the board.
And that's why you presented it this way, is to reduce the amount of articles on town meeting?
Correct. And to me, the salient question for all the articles is, if there's money, how are we funding it?
And any one of these article, any one of these articles could be amended on town meeting floor if somebody had an exception to one of them, correct?
Correct.
And how many articles would we have roughly, Joe, if we didn't do this?
I believe it's 24 separate articles.
24 more?
Correct.
And that would make a total?
Well, sorry, to be accurate. One, two, three, 21 more.
And that would make a total of how many articles for town meeting 2023-ish?
I believe we're at the over, which is greater than 75.
Thank you, Joe. John, I'll hear from you. Go ahead, Mary.
Making, would you add 24 to that 70?
So you have three, the total number of projects is 24, so I'm saying that I'd have to add another 21 articles total.
And that would bring us to 74, or would that bring us to 95?
No, that would bring us over 75, but it would accomplish all the projects having their own article.
Okay, gotcha.
Unlike me, but I'll start with you, John.
Hi, John Chori. Thanks for bringing this up on this capital item here. You've answered a couple questions already. My main question on this one is, I only see 17, I don't see 24.
Two articles.
Three articles.
One underneath of it, three articles.
Okay, I'll take your word, because I only see 17 listed, and then I see another capital, chapter 90 funds.
Joe?
That's all I see.
So, can I see the document you're referring to?
It was in the packet.
So then, if you're looking at the one in the packet, there are 17 projects that are funded by free cash. There are two projects that are funded by capital outlay. Excuse me, it's not capital outlay, by water retained earnings. And then you have chapter 90 funds, and the rest would be under the borrowing questions because they're debt exclusions. So those articles represent, I think, what would be totaled to be 20 of the 24 projects.
24. Whatever the numbers are, I mean, you're getting bigger numbers as far as warrant article numbers. Because when I first read this, I said, oh my goodness, this is, is this an all or nothing article? Meaning that if some person objected to one of these articles, they couldn't object to it because they're going to vote for them all at once. You know, even if you double, I mean, if you bring it to 24, I think these articles should be placed individually on the warrant, not grouped together, and that way people can discuss them. Or, suggestion, I was on the finance committee in the town of Southboro, and we had articles like this. And what would happen is the moderator would ask the town meeting, you know, we've got a list of, say, 17, what I see right here, right now, and he would read down the 17 articles. And he would start off at number one and say, if anyone has a question or objection to number one, say, hold. And he would go down the list, and if a person said, hold, they would hold that article. They'd get to the end of the list, if three were held, they would vote on the 14 that weren't held and approve those or disapprove them, and then go back to the three that were held and address them individually. That way, people could have a say into each of these articles. If you lump them all together like this, it's going to be very difficult if you have an objection to this article. That's my only question on that. And then the other one was, do you have the chapter 90 funds in here twice? I see it at number 10 of 700,000, which I thought they were going to do this year with the free cash. But then, in the next article, you're asking for another 700,000. Should that only be once or twice?
No, it should only be once. Again, the salient argument tonight is whether to place articles in the warrant or not. The tables are going to be revisited to make sure they're accurate.
Okay, I just see it. If you're only asking for one, 700,000.
Correct.
Yeah. So that's my only question is, voting these all or nothing, I don't think it's a good service to the town. Thank you.
So your opinion is you don't like it?
Yeah, it's my opinion.
Larry?
Well, I appreciate John's comment, but I'm reluctant to make our reading any longer than it is. I think this does make it somewhat more difficult, but people can raise objections to a specific line item because you do that in the operating budget. I realize it's complicated for people to do that because it goes fast, but I would, I'm in support of this.
Thank you. Don?
This is another area where I'd plant a flag. To me, I mean, this is the epitome of that SAT question that says, what doesn't belong in this sequence? There's all kinds of disparate things in here, harbor master, police department, facilities, maintenance, fire department. We're going to be there quite a bit, even with this together, if people start amending it and then getting back to the main motion and amending another part of it. This could be even longer than separate. I would be all in, advocating for every single one of these separately on town meeting floor personally. But if they're all glommed together, I'm reticent to do that because you're holding people hostage if they only really want to fund, say, the fire department and police department. And we could well wind up with an hour's worth of amendments. It gets so complicated with, okay, we're only speaking to the amendment now, and that's amendment number one, and that is about line item three. And that passes or doesn't pass, then somebody stands and says, I want to amend line item seven. And then the discussion gets back to, we're not talking the main motion yet, we're talking about the amendment to the main motion. It's going, if you want to create chaos, that's a good way of starting. Because I, I mean, even we have problems sometimes following, whether it's an amendment or the main motion or anything. We can whiz by these things, and they could be done in just the way John suggested. I've seen other towns even on the Cape do that. You say, anybody have an objection to leaving this in the group? And you maybe come out with one or two holdouts, and everybody else gets glommed together because the town meeting asked it to be put together.
Mary?
Have we done this in the past, Joe?
Yes. I can elaborate if you'd like.
Yeah, because I'm leaning towards John and Don, that I think it is unwieldy, even though Larry pointed out we're a lot smarter now. I can see us getting confused. Never mind the public. We had some amendments that we went in circles last year, so I'm a little concerned about lumping them all together.
Julie?
I don't, I don't have a problem with the process that both Don and John spoke about. What I would say is, why don't we ask our moderator how he thinks we should best proceed? Because he's going to be the one making those motions. So I think we just ask Michael Ford, you know, if we want to do it this way, or, you know, we want to do hold, whatever way, then let's ask him, because he's going to be the expert. No offense.
Joe, what, Joe, what article do we vote the capital plan?
There's a standalone article to do that, and I have it, I think I omitted it. It's a standalone article to adopt a plan for the year, I believe.
And that's generally close to the operating budget?
Correct, yeah, these, if I could, these fall typically right after the operating budgets. And so if I could expand, Mr. Chairman, the original speaker at the dais is incorrect insofar as I was working off of warrant types that preceded me. So if you look at the 2019 warrant, there was an Article 11, which grouped seven capital projects together because they were of a certain dollar value. Article 12 had seven other projects, and they were all related to facilities, maintenance, and repair. So for me, it makes no difference how you want me to group them. The question I have is, I think we should contemplate a grouping system so that we don't have 24 articles. Because as you've all stated correctly, just like in years past, any town meeting member could rise and speak to a line item, not just the article itself. But to say that it hasn't been done in a manner similar to this is incorrect. And my effort was to try to demonstrate how much is free cash is going to and what it covers, how much other funding sources like water retained earnings, chapter 90, or borrowings get to. So the town, if I can say it that way, has done it several different ways over the past.
So I guess my question is going back to the article on the capital plan, not these capital items to vote the funding source, but the, we have to vote to accept a capital plan. And in the capital plan, year one would be these items.
It would allow for these items, you don't appropriate it until you get to the scope.
Right. But the capital plan would have all of these items listed under year one, correct?
Right.
And we vote that capital plan before the articles for the funding, correct, normally? So if I'm correct, town meeting will have the first shot at voting the capital plan for the amount showing all of these things as year one. So all we're really asking them to do from that moment on is to vote the list of capital items for funding source, correct? Don?
You're leaving one big thing out, because we haven't had the discussion about the two-thirds vote to move things in different years. So if we don't have that discussion, and you just vote on a capital plan, and you get to this, I know it's an express thought to be able to move this along quickly, but you could do that just by generically listing them per purpose. You could get the seven articles right away.
I'm still trying to answer the question for the public. If we're voting a capital plan and year one, we're not voting the two-thirds vote to change out years. We're not voting a two-thirds vote to change the first year, we're voting the capital plan and all these items are in it, correct?
But that doesn't appropriate anything.
I know. But the town meeting will vote to accept the capital plan first, correct? So in essence, their vote, am I right?
Correct. The article typically states to adopt the five-year capital plan. So it would be from fiscal year 2024 through fiscal year 2028.
Okay.
And so you adopt the plan, first article, and then you appropriate for year one projects.
Okay. I see no reason not to group them. I'll block off the whole week so we can all be at town meeting for a week, but we talk about confusing town meeting. And one thing that's confusing about town meeting, and it seems to be, it's something that comes up every year, and we talk about participation at town meeting and why people don't participate. And one of the number one reasons is given the hour that it goes to and the amount of articles. And that's been the biggest complaint that I've heard about town meeting and why we don't get participation. And a lot of people think we should do it on Saturdays, so it's an all-day event, so a lot of people don't feel comfortable driving at night. And in my mind, by adding that many articles, we are extending town meeting that long. Clearly, we're, are we going to debate that, or do we want to try and make a decision on this tonight? Mary?
What about instead of this list of, instead of having 17, if we did them by department, that would get it down to seven. Admin, fire, harbor, info, police, public works, and facility management. That would at least get it in
That's what I was saying.
Some buckets, but not quite 17, would be seven.
So there's two for a compromise. Julie Thott, oh, town administrator?
Well, I just want to put out there that it would be those plus water, plus wastewater.
Right.
Because those are there. I think I have the cable funds as a separate article. But for me, what I was trying to get to is, you can look at that article, every single item there is proposed to be paid by free cash. So if you did say one of the departments, it would be that the sum of, and you put in the dollar amount, be free cash, that the sum of, put a dollar amount in, be from raise and appropriate, and so on and so forth. I was trying to give clarity of, there's been a lot of discussion about the capital plan, so these are the three major funds that we're relying upon. So that if you want to know how much free cash is being spent, you see it in one place. Otherwise, you would see it dispersed over seven articles. So I'm just trying to accomplish, what level of transparency does the board want to demonstrate to town meeting?
Thank you, Joe. Julie?
I don't have an issue with grouping them by departments, but I thought, thank you for clarifying on what you were intending because I was focusing on the free cash aspect and that those were all in one category as free cash.
Correct.
So I understand what the town administrator is trying to do. I don't have a problem with grouping them, but I also don't have a problem leaving them and asking the moderator if he thinks, you know, we can just move through these and anything in particular, because it is a good way to show free cash is all right there. And if he can run through it and say, no, we can hold, if we've got an issue, we'll come back, to John's point. I don't have a problem with either way. Whatever the moderator thinks is the best way forward, I think is what we should probably ask.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to point out, because I'm willing to compromise and go into the seven categories, it makes sense to me. In terms of free cash, we're not going to go over because somebody has to come up with some sort of amendment for this. The reality is, the earth itself will not stop spinning on its axis if somebody doesn't want to fund one of these because free cash doesn't just go away if you don't appropriate it, it just doesn't get appropriated. If somebody said, I don't want to do this for $700,000, whatever it is, I mean, the money just, doesn't go poof. And we're at zero, we're zeroed out. I mean, Joe, you've got the money for the free cash for everything that's stated here, right?
Say it again, please?
You've got the money in free cash for everything that's stated here, correct?
Correct, it's a balanced budget.
Okay, well, and that's my point.
We have not expended the full extent of free cash.
But we're not going to go over in any event. This gives everybody an opportunity to say generically, I do want to make sure that we fund the police cruisers. I do want to make sure that we fund the fire department, but if they want to have a big discussion about, I don't know, road maintenance improvements, it gives them the opportunity to focus in on that without having to worry about, what's that going to do with the police cruisers and the fire department? We're not going to get anything for them because this is going to be held hostage? I would rather have clarity to have people make the decision. They have never said, hell with all of it, I'm not going to pay anything. We've passed capital budgets before, and we've always funded what we were doing, with minor exceptions.
Thank you, Don. Julie?
So just to clarify, though, I want to make sure I'm following Don's train of thought there. So are you, I mean, I know that free cash doesn't just disappear, obviously, if for some reason something's voted down, but under the scenario you just discussed, transparency is important, it's all, all of it is in one area. Are you saying that you're okay with going through them one by one? Or are you saying you want them in separate articles grouped by department?
If we did this in the manner that John was discussing, or in the manner that Mary had discussed, I'm fine with either way. If the moderator allows for the town meeting to decide that we don't want to group it all as one, we want two or three things separately discussed, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with bringing us down to generic properties, that this is the facilities maintenance part of it. And that brings us down from 17 to seven articles. My object isn't to facilitate this to be the fastest town meeting ever, I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to say what they want to say.
Okay, I just wasn't sure where you were going with that, that's why I was looking for clarification.
Either way would be fine.
Joe?
Again, in the end, I'll look for direction from the board. But if I can further explain what you have in front of you, is I have heard loud and clear over this budget process that folks are concerned, not necessarily folks at this table, but with the amount of free cash that we have. And so right away, I wanted to demonstrate how we're utilizing the vast majority of that free cash. There are other articles that will rely upon free cash. So that was point number one, because I've heard the discussion that there's too much free cash for the town to use. The quickest way to get to the major balance of it is to show it in this manner. But more importantly, free cash does disappear. And that was the other thing that I heard loud and clear. We had $900,000 left over in free cash at the end of fiscal year 20, excuse me, at the end of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, and that's part of what led to the higher free cash number that we now have. So if they do take it out and we don't account for it, this ties all the sources together. Now, you can take it out because it's still incumbent upon finance and administration, right now on both, to make sure it all ties out. But if you were to take something out of free cash and not use it for something else, that free cash disappears into free cash the next year. So I, for one, don't want to be accused of not telling everybody where the free cash came from, what it is and what it's being used for, and what the balance would be if town meeting concluded. So, and again, that's trying to be transparent on your behalf. Last but not least, I'll take any direction that the board votes to give me.
Thank you, Joe. Larry?
I'm with Julie on this one. I would keep it, and with Joe, I would keep it this together, free cash, that's a good grouping, I hadn't really thought of that, that's a good grouping. And I would leave it to the moderator on how he wants to explain that to town meeting, that they can address each one in the, in this table. Because he's, Michael's pretty good of leading people through this and saying, you know, Because he's, Michael's pretty good of leading people through this and saying, you know, this, read it and you can argue, you can discuss each one if you want or hold on. I would, I will leave it the way it is and leave it to the town moderator.
Mary?
I, I'm with Larry, and you're talking the, the way, uh, Mr. Chori spoke. Is there any, is there anything in this list you want separate?
Give the town moderator to explain it. This is a grouping, you know?
I like that.
So we would, we would leave this as, if I'm hearing it correctly from three of you, we would leave this as it is and then leave it up to the moderator to describe. And then anyone in the public that has a question about 204 Sisson Road can pull that out. Uh, and then we could debate that separate. And then, and then, and then that would be an amendment, correct?
Right. Not the way he described it. It would actually pull it out to be a free standing vote relative to it by itself.
Well, I leave that to the town moderator, moderator, and how he wants to do that.
We're all talking at once. Joe? And then Julie?
Speaking from some experience, it would be a, a motion to divide the question. And so you divide whatever you want out. It stands by itself. You go back to the main motion, you dispose of that. Then you go back to the divided motion.
Okay.
Okay. Well, this will be my first town meeting with a divided question. Julie?
So the only thing I would ask is that, I mean, we can vote to put this on tonight if we're all comfortable with that, but.
We already did.
No, we haven't. We started with discussion.
But, but I would ask that we show the moderator the format so that he sees it up front in, in case he sees any issue that he thinks we should do it differently. So let's just put it in front of Michael.
Joe should have that discussion with him directly because it's a technical thing that.
And just to be clear, I would, um, want to partner with town council, speaking to moderator because those are the two parties that really do that stuff.
Can we, um, have this conversation, Joe, sooner than we have the normal conversation with the moderator about town meeting in case he suggests we do it differently?
Yes, this would be well in advance of the motions meeting.
That way we can, we can go back and revisit this next week or the week after if he thinks we should. Can I get you to, um, say what you say on this one, Joe?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I would ask that the article known as capital outlay plan items funded from free cash be, uh, added to the warrant.
With, with the discussion we just had, I'm so moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you. I would ask that the article known as capital outlay plan items funded from water retained earnings be placed into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, two zero?
Thank you. I would ask.
Zero? I lost three members in that whole conversation.
Oh, they were conscientious abstentions. Sorry. I, I would ask that the article known as capital outlay plan items funded from chapter ninety funds be added to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Larry wants to do this before the election happens.
Six zero.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I believe you have in your packet, um, can I compare just to make sure we're talking about the same thing? How many pages do you have?
Oh, total, this starts one of three. I just ended on.
And then do you have this right after the third one?
Three.
Okay.
Yep.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next articles are, um, they're not all borrowing. However, they were segregated, um, from the overall because they are, uh, big ticket items. And, um, two of the three actually have borrowings. So, um, at this point, I think it's better out of an abundance of caution to hold off on these because the water wastewater superintendent and I are working with council to make sure we have the explicit language. Um, so I'd, I'd hold off tonight if, if the board's okay with that. Um, unless the board wants to go in any other direction.
Do you want to try and do this next week or do we want to do it on the 27th when we have a joint meeting with the water commissioners?
No, I would definitely want to do it next week because again, we're framing out the warrant. I, I can take a, a try at it if it, um, because I'm seeing that the titles are, uh, correct.
The titles are, the titles are really what we want to frame the warrant, so.
So then, having said that disregard, I would ask that the board vote to place the article known as West Harwich Route 28 sewer main installation into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Don?
Yeah, I'm just wondering in general with these, we talk, if we're going to be bonding, what's the period of the note we're looking at, amortizing him over?
So that's part of the discussion that's going on. Which of these three have to be borrowed, uh, and what the timeframe would be? And I would not be, uh, equipped to get into that detail tonight.
Okay, but I mean, taxpayers are going to be interested. They're not, they're not going to be paying all six and a half million dollars in one year, but they'd be very interested in knowing what the hit to their tax bill is, say if it's over ten years versus over twenty years, over thirty years. So we really need to answer that question explicitly next week.
And, uh, Julie, go ahead.
I just want to point out one other thing that, uh, not, not to get bogged down in detail, but we should really make sure, because this is such a large stretch, that the people along this area understand that there'll be a five-year moratorium on digging up the road. So if they have anything that they're looking to do, you know, publicly, we should make people aware of that because that can be a real problem.
And Don, some of the numbers for the meeting, the joint meeting on the 27th, some of that is on that agenda and GHD should be here as well with refined estimates. Go ahead.
To Julie's point, I just want to make sure that everybody understands there are many things that we have authority over. This is not one of them. We either put a pipe in when they open up that road or we don't put a pipe in when they open up that road. But DOT's rules are, once, once they close it and repave it, you are not doing anything to it for five years, for any reason whatsoever. So it isn't about us, the, the discussion.
In fact, on that topic, didn't we already approve this? We, we talked about this.
We approved the engineering of it.
Oh, we approved the engineering. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we haven't voted yet. Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And actually, uh, related to that, I'd like to put something before the board tonight under the items not anticipated when I made the agenda for your consideration of a vote. Late this afternoon, I got a text message from the water superintendent to call him. I did. And he sent me a text saying, I'm trying to submit a community project funding application congressional earmark to Keating's office to try and offset some of the costs for the Route 28 water main replacement project. I just received this application from his office today and it is due back on Friday. One of the required submissions, thank you. One of the required submissions is a letter of support from elected community leaders. So I would be looking for a motion tonight for the, uh, board to allow the town administrator and the wastewater superintendent um, to, and, uh, to form that letter and, and the motion to include, to let the chair sign and I'll sign it.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, uh.
Hold on one second, Joe.
So you have a motion on the sewer main, um, that you haven't disposed of, and then the next one is the water main, which is what that was related to.
Okay. We already voted the first one though, right? The Route 28.
I don't have a check mark yet, so I don't think so.
We did. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Don, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I move, I move to empower the town administrator and the water superintendent to, uh, craft a letter for the signature of the chair in support of securing an earmark through, uh, Congress and, uh, yeah, Keating's office.
Second. Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion?
No, just thank, uh, thank Don for going after additional funding.
Dan?
Dan.
All in favor?
Although I'll accept the thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you. Next page, Mr. Chairman, you'll see, um, I would ask that the article known as West Harwich Route 28 water main replacement article be placed in the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you. I would ask that the article known as East Harwich Wastewater Collection System Expansion be placed in the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Don?
Are we going to go out and fundraise pretty soon, like with cookie sales and stuff?
Better be special cookies.
Fifty million dollars, yeah. I mean, this is something that we really need to talk about because this has not been discussed anywhere in a big, with a number attached to it.
Joe?
It's part of the capital plan.
Got it. But the public doesn't get that. I mean, this is a big ask. They really need to know as much about it as possible between now and then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero. And again, I do have them on the 27th and it will be.
And, and maybe not the specific number for that specific article, but certainly you'd have to have been living under a rock to not have known the wastewater numbers were coming and they were going to be huge.
But the general public doesn't really know that we switched gears to another engineer specifically for the purpose of having, um, a, a greater belief, if you will, in what they're estimating and how they're doing it. I mean, we, that was, that was a big hangup. They would, the, the old engineer had accrued something of a mediocre reputation. I think it's important for them to know that this is based on something more solid than that.
Joe?
I believe the comment was for the former engineering firm, not our immediate former engineer. He's a good guy.
That is correct.
That is correct.
Just in case we didn't vote it all in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next I would draw your attention to, I believe there are seven, um, articles that were submitted by citizen petition uh, and have been certified by the town clerk. And so therefore, we know that these are automatically, um, debated at a town meeting. I think it's a good act for the board to formally act, uh, to place them. And I can go through them, uh, with general information. And again, you'd be hearing from the proponents. Um, I believe you said your meeting on March 20th.
Do we have those in front of us? Are they in our packet?
It was a separate email that was sent by staff. That was, uh, sent today. That omission was because I was out of the office on Friday. That's on me.
All right, Don?
I, I'm happy to discuss them in the future, uh, because sometimes our email has glitches in it. That's the polite way of putting it. If they could just put that in a drop box as an addendum, because that's the way I generally look at the packet.
Joe noted.
And this would be just, um, you're just going to outline these now or we'll do that next week?
No, I'm just going to outline them so that you can vote to place them in the warrant, which is a formal, um, administrative act.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So the first one would be a citizen petition article submitted by lead petitioner Patrick Otten. And it is to prohibit the sale, distribution, and use of any type of balloon inflated with any type of lighter-than-air gas within the town of Harwich. Uh, I would ask that you place that petition article into the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. And Joe, just, uh, formality question. It's not up to us to put it in the warrant. State law. Why, why are we, why are we bothering with this formality?
So typically, if you have any borrowings, you send everything to bond council. Bond council will rely upon any errors and omissions to deny something. So if we can demonstrate that the evening that we did substantially created the borrowing warrant included all these articles, it's meant to strengthen the town's position if we ever submit the warrant.
Thank you.
I, I would strongly recommend that the board continue briefly on this act.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. Four to one.
Well, don't we have to?
What's that?
We have, yeah.
We have to anyway, so they're going in anyway.
But we will have another discussion about whether we support them or not.
Mr. Chairman, if the board's more comfortable, I'll yield on it. Um.
Board's fine. I'm just a no. They all voted yes.
But, but Michael, I mean.
I will have you on speed dial when bond council calls.
Michael, I mean, I brought this back, I think, after our MMA conference. I, I would still like to have council look at those, not to, not to change them at all, but to be sure that we're not wasting everyone's time.
So, uh, to that end, we still have to put them on the warrant.
We do, yes.
We then send everything to council because I will tell you that I know from direct experience, one of them, uh, will not go past the warrant because it can't.
Right, we should know that.
They overreach their authority.
Thank you.
However, that's not the one I just mentioned.
And I was going to mention that as well, Mary, because I remember your last comment. Go ahead, Joe?
Uh, thank you. I would ask the board place the petitioned article. Uh, give me one second. Yeah, it's the Plastic Reduction Act. I was trying to make reference to the lead petitioner, but I can't discern that. Uh, so it would be the petition article relative to plastic reduction.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. Four one.
Thank you. Next I would ask that the board place the petitioned article submitted by lead petitioner Patrick Otten uh, into the warrant, and it is to see if the town will vote to authorize and ask the select board to petition the great and general court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for special legislation, the text of which is set forth prohibiting the application of fertilizer in the town of Harwich except for the purposes of commercial, agricultural, and the residential use of organic fertilizer with low nitrogen and phosphorus for use in growing fruits and vegetables that is allowed under the USDA National Organic Program Organic Standards parentheses O M R I listed, close parentheses.
So moved, even though it's the longest title I've ever heard.
Second.
Not a title yet.
Okay, moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? And I'm opposed. Four one.
Thank you. The next one would be to place the petition article from lead petitioner, uh, Denise Bouvier, trustee of, uh, First Shelley Path Realty Trust and others, uh, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 82, Section 24 dash, excuse me, Sections 21 dash 24, as amended in any applicable statutes, to accept the laying out as a townway by order of the Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Do you want more of an explanation?
Yeah, I have no idea what that means.
So the petitioners are seeking to have the Board of Selectmen actively lay out a public, uh, a road as a public way, and this is the article that has to go in the warrant but cannot go forward because it's illegal. So you should vote to place it.
My, my motion was that with reticence.
So we got moving a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll be an eye on that one. Five zero.
Since it's illegal.
Because it's illegal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next one would be to place the petitioned article from lead petitioner Daniel Baker to see if the town will vote to ask the Board of Selectmen acting on behalf of the town to petition the state legislature to amend the Massachusetts General Laws governing the dispersal of school choice funds and to include all other forms of alternative education as currently allowed by the state, e.g., homeschool and private school participants, et cetera. In addition, the petition should be made with language requesting that any changes to the MGL should consider interim support to address any negative drawdown impacts to the public school system during any resultant adjustment phase.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
How do you instruct the state?
Didn't, didn't we discuss this last year at the town meeting and shot it down? Can they bring it back every year?
Yeah, they have a right with a petition article to do anything they want to do.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, the relevant word is the first one that says, um, ask. So it's an ask of the board, therefore it's not binding.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm opposed.
Four one.
We did that.
Getting into this now.
We're having fun now. Uh, the next one, Mr. Chairman, is, um, uh, to insert petition article by lead petitioner Leo Kukounis to see if the town will vote to see, um, to see if the town will vote, to see if the town will vote to authorize and address the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement with an established educational facility, private party or not-for-profit, um, entree, through all means necessary included, yet not limited to an intermunicipal agreement or long-term lease for purpose to create and operate an agricultural slash environmental educational facility on said land acquired at the Harwich Annual Town Meeting, uh, 2001, Article 11, situated 374 Main Street, North Harwich, shown on Harwich Assessors Map 47 as parcel A dash 10 containing 33.6 acres, more or less. And I'm going to stop there. There's a lot more. And I'm going to stop there, there's a lot more, but I think you get the sense of the article, unless you want me to continue.
In the spirit of how he put that in the beginning, so moved, so moved.
Second, second.
Any further discussion?
Done, well done.
And I would just say that this petition article also relates to an earlier article Joe alluded on, if we do our own article, the petition article, the person that submitted this will remove that on town meeting floor. If we don't, he wishes it to go forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, Joe.
Thank you. Next, I would ask the board to submit a petitioned article, citizen petition article by lead petitioner Leo Kukounis, to see if the town will vote, to see if the town will vote to amend action of the town's annual meeting of two thousand, Article eleven, purchase of three seventy-four Main Street, North Harwich, described in deed, recorded at Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, Book one oh seven nine two, page two fifty-seven, and shown on a plan recorded at Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and Plan Book five six zero, page fifty-five, by adding the following: "The property described in the Article four," parentheses, "agricultural and environmental education," close parentheses, "preservation open space, and to act fully thereon."
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion?
Yeah, what time of the day did he write these things?
You call him and ask him. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you. I believe that is all of them, but I'll work with staff to make sure we have all of them. And that's all I have for articles this evening. However, before I yield, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the members if you can go back again just to the original document, which was the twelve-page document, and it talks about, on page twelve, additional articles to be added. Again, there would be, we're expecting three zoning bylaw amendments regarding accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, a zoning bylaw amendment relative to the floodplain, a zoning bylaw amendment relative to solar photovoltaic. And then, as I mentioned before, there is, I believe there's going to be discussion of the board on a potential personnel list of positions.
That discussion will happen, yes.
Thank you. And then...
Start that tonight, but I plan on making it a next week discussion so that we can decide if we want to make that a policy and start this year or not. What else you all said?
Just that, again, due to elders supplemental funding and prior years unpaid bills. Having said all of that, I'm not aware of any other articles, so I would like to use this opportunity to ask the board members if you're aware of any other articles, and then just put it out to Department Eds and the general public, because I think we've accomplished the majority of what was, we were looking for either by standard action or special acts this year.
I'm hoping we have enough articles. Julie?
So on, on those three articles, you may already be doing this, but I know that the planning board was going to have these back. I think it's March twenty-eighth is the next hearing. But in the meantime, is legal already looking at these, council?
I'd have to confirm that. I believe they are, but I want to confirm that. And notwithstanding the hearings, we need to have that in the warrant long before their hearings, so it could be something that is placed that may not have an action at town meeting.
Yes, I'm just thinking that it would be good to confirm that they are looking at it so that obviously it's in good shape for that hearing, so that if for any reason he has to explain why certain things can't be done or added, or, you know. That's tomorrow night?
Cindy, would you approach the microphone and state your name for record, please?
There's a meeting tomorrow, I don't think that, that's the hearing.
I don't think it was, is it tomorrow night?
It's March fourteenth. They continued the public hearing to their next meeting, which was March fourteenth.
All right, I don't know why.
I have it in my book for that.
Yeah, no, thank you, because I, I must have put it in.
Michael, my question to Joe is, Joe, because I know you, you have a firm grasp of deadlines. Could you let us know what the deadlines are for our next actions on the articles? When we have to go to print?
When does this go to print?
What's our schedule for...
We are, we, the administration department, are obligated to get the warrant that we want published for town meeting to the Cape Cod Chronicle no later than Tuesday, April eleventh. Now, I didn't want to say that because we do not want to rely upon the meetings in April to finalize that, but if we do, I would ask you to do nothing later than April third.
You all said?
I am, because this came up at a meeting, I think Julie and I said, and I put a deadline of the first of April.
We said first, yeah.
Be close.
So...
Don?
I agree with you about the personnel article, we're not going to solve that tonight, but could I ask through you, Mr. Chair, the town administrator, have some sort of language so that we can actually refer to it as opposed to just something in the abstract? How it would actually work if you did have that article in language?
Joe?
So I can create any kind of article the board wants. My problem with that one is it's not a board article. It's something that the finance committee has suggested. They've provided information, but they have not provided a framework. So I don't know what we're looking to accomplish by the article. I don't want to write the FinCom's article only to get it wrong from what they're looking for.
We're still going to have to have a discussion. We may want to have that framed with what we would like to do.
Well, I would agree with you, but how does he do that until we vote to do it? I mean, I know you're looking for a draft of something, but I would just share with the board today, we got from the chairman of the finance committee, and I haven't found the meeting that this took place at yet. But attached, please find the subject Position Request Cost Justification Summary, which includes the recent feedback from Anne Marie. FinCom recommends a personnel article to be considered in the warrant prior to the budget article. Otherwise, we will make a positive motion on the budget article, which will not include these positions. So ultimately, FinCom had a vote, I would assume, since he took this position, to make a motion on town meeting floor with a lesser amount of the operating budget, taking all of the positions out. And quite frankly, I think that's so far out of what they should be doing. I'm not sure where this finance committee is, and I know other board members support it, but that's our decision. That is the executive body's decision on how we do it. And we can talk about how we've done it in the past, but we have not done it like this since I've been on the board.
I agree.
And, and that's a policy decision, not a finance committee. And that's, that's a threat of, of some level, saying that that's how they're going to take this up. And we talked a lot tonight about confusing town meeting. For the finance committee to come up and make a motion that excludes all of the positions that are enhancement services, enhancement of services that the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen have talked about on numerous occasions, through a whole year's worth of residents, many years, I would say, in the building department, residents calling and complaining, residents asking for more, the inability to put permits out within thirty days, the fire department's request for three, three new firefighters. This, this is an overreach and will confuse town meeting more than anything we've talked about tonight. And it's ultimately a Board of Selectmen decision, not a finance committee decision. So I look forward to the debate next week, but we hire a town administrator to administer the town, and now we're going to micromanage to the point where we're going to, we're going to add a night to town meeting. Larry?
Well, my memory of how the system works is, is that we present articles, we get position articles, we present articles, and then FinCom can agree or not agree with this. They always haven't agreed with us in the past. They voted against one, and that's their right. But this puts us in a funny stage, they want to create their own petition article instead of the selectman. I don't see where that, I'm fine with them not agreeing with this. I mean, that's their prerogative, but to try to create something by themselves is, I don't see how that fits in.
Well, thank you, Larry, and it's our budget. If they don't agree with the positions, they should just come out in public and say we don't agree with the positions. That's their prerogative, hundred percent. If they don't have a positive motion on our budget, they should just not make it.
Yeah, that's my point.
Don?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, but I disagree and I will, I continue to disagree. I feel that there should be a personnel article. We've never had a problem when we demonstrate, because you're right, people have asked for certain things, but this is a permanent addition to the size of the town government, which is going to be permanently assessed to everybody's tax bill. They have the right to be able, on freestanding basis, say, yeah, I would like these to be included in every year's budget from here on, and these things are absolutely necessary. I would certainly support them, but I don't want to get involved in an argument because we're getting, we're getting involved to a certain degree with ego here about who's, who's article. I don't think that the article is really the problem. If we get to the point where it's not discreetly identified, they don't need an article.
Excuse me? If you can talk, you can take it out in the hallway, please, thank you.
They don't need an article. They, they cannot make the motion, and then we could make the motion to approve, but then they could make a motion to amend the budget. And I don't want to see that, because that's the most complex amendment process we could possibly have on town meeting floor. We could take a seventy million dollar budget, you start pulling line items out of it.
Thank you, Don, and I, I would agree with you on a lot of those points, with the exception of they're going to take our operating budget and do the same thing that you just mentioned in reverse. We're going to have to make a positive motion for it. So it's no different than, than what, the way the process lays out. And then I will go back to it's a policy decision. We don't have a policy on this. We've never done it this way. So we're talking about going to the first town meeting with a recommendation from the finance committee to do this without a policy of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I, I think, Don, we're probably talking apples and oranges. As you know, I'm, I'm for having separate articles with new positions. My point was, that should come from us, not from FinCom.
I agree, that's what I'm saying.
We can debate it.
Yeah.
And whether we do or not, I just...
It starts with a charter change and a policy.
We don't need a charter change to just have him draft an article for us. Whether we do or don't want to put it in is another question.
My point with the policy changed, Don, is we don't do it this way. We haven't done it this way for the last ten years. The only one we could go back and find was Sean Libby's position. So this has not been done this way, so this is a new thing. That's why I say policy change, and it should be a charter change if people feel so strongly that we should do that. Mary?
Last year, I was pretty adamant that we not do them separately because we had two positions. We had the housing advocate and we had the cultural director. And you would have had to have been living under a rock to have not have heard about them over the course of a year. I feel a little differently this year. I wasn't physically here, but I sat through the Saturday budget hearing, and there's, there's ads to police, to fire. There's the HR director, which I don't know if that's in or out at the moment. There were a bunch of ads, enough that I thought maybe these should be presented. And I would only present a full-time or part-time new ad. I would not include a position that Joe has chosen not to fill, so it's already an approved position. It sat vacant for a year or two, for whatever reason. That's already approved. And the ones that he's making from part-time to full-time, if he can make that work in the budget, that's his business. But I, I'm thinking with the numbers of them that there are, that they ought to be shown somewhere in the warrant. And I know that's different than how I felt last year.
Thank you, Mary. Julie?
Well, you know, I, I get the, for example, a personnel person would be a whole new ad, but I struggle with, to your point, Mary, I think you're talking about these positions, but they are new in the building department. You know, that's to bring a level of service that should be already stated and happening, and, and it's not because of the influx. So those are the things that I, when, when we start talking about putting every, every single position, fire, building, you know, you know, we're talking about a certain level of service that we anticipate for our taxpayers. A personnel person, I don't have a problem, that's fairly new discussion, I guess, although I've been talking about that for quite some time. We just really never went forward with that. I don't have a problem with maybe making that an article, but I, I really do struggle with separating these out, each, each type of thing, because, you know, there's a certain level of service that we're trying to make sure our taxpayers and our citizens have. And, and I do think we open it up to this debate to be, and again, I, I know people don't like it when I say it, but hijacked, because it often gets hijacked at town meeting. So I, I struggle with both. I don't have a problem with the newer position. I don't really know that it's worth divvying up all of those positions.
Well, you're going to bring it back for a discussion, right?
Next week. Mary, HR is not going to go forward unless you want it to go forward for another round of debate, but we talked about it last week in your absence, and I did say to the board I would check with you, and if you wanted it on another agenda this year, I would bring it forward.
No, it can wait.
It's just we'd have to change the assistant town administrator's job description. There's a lot based on how it was talked about on having where they report, and we just didn't think that we were going to have the time to do anything smart this year.
Julie did fill me in on that, so I'm, I'm fine with that. Michael, thank you.
Anything else related to articles or budget that the board wants to discuss tonight? Larry?
No.
Don? Mary?
All set.
Julie?
No.
Joe, anything further?
Just for some clarification, what would you want to have come back next week regarding personnel? Do you want me to craft an article or work with council to craft an article? Or do you want to talk about the concept? Do you want to rely upon the finance committee spreadsheet that I believe they've shared?
I want to have a debate about it, but I'll open it up to the board. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Especially coming off of Larry's comment, I, I'm not going to cede the responsibility for the article to anybody but us. I mean, if we don't, if we can't come to an agreement, that's a different story. But I'd like to see a draft of something that we might actually support being in there. I could, it's irrelevant to me whether finance committee has something drafted, because it's, it's going to have to be us inserting it.
Mary?
Yeah, I, I'd like to see something, proposed language, what you think would make sense, and it'll just spark our debate.
Julie?
I agree, you know, with the chair. I mean, I, I don't really understand where finances come with this, but I'm happy to look at it.
Joe?
Whoever I am.
Larry, Don.
I would, I would like for you to, to come forth with something and, in a limited fashion, as Mary's was discussing in the past, only those new full-time positions, for instance. We don't want to make it too broad that we can debate.
I don't want to see anything. Joe?
So when you were going around the table, one of the members of the board said, whatever makes sense to me. If I could expand on that for a moment?
Please.
And I think you all know me, I'm the guy that tracks how many days till town meeting, forty-nine, almost got through the meeting without saying that. I, I think Department Ed's going to attest to this. I love everything about town meeting and everything leading up to town meeting, including this fun discussion. And I mean that sincerely, because I think it's the best form of government and Massachusetts does it better than anybody. For me, what makes sense is we have Article Four, which is departmental operating budgets. And every one of the departmental operating budgets that is impacted by these personnel requests are in there. So for me, what would make sense is that we have, in the explanation field of Article Four, a table that lists the positions that are into the budget. Because if we didn't do any of this, and if the board was agreeable to it, I am prepared to speak to every line in the warrant, let alone the budget, and put out there in advance what we're dealing with. And something that would be done before we even get into the substantive articles, which is Article Three and beyond, to say that, you will hear, you know, the way I used to do it in another town, and as I would say, if you draw your attention to Appendix B, line item four, which is the subtotal of the selectmen's budget, please note, and put it all out there ahead of time. And the reason I would do that is, if we're looking at a multi-night town meeting, not everybody who's there the first night may be there the second, or if we go third night, three nights. And so I would want to put out there the very first night everything that the town, through the Board of Selectmen and Administration, are looking to do. So that even if somebody was there Monday but didn't come back, they at least heard as much information from the town, Board of Selectmen and Administration, that they possibly could. So for me, what makes sense is an, is an appendage of some sort to the article where this is going to be done, because that's Article Four. Because last but not least, what we're talking about, to me, relates back to Chapter Four of the Charter, which says the town administrator. And under Section Five, it talks about, excuse me, Section Three, it talks about administrative organization. Under Section four, five, two, I believe, it says that any new, full-time, compensated position that is being offered, and that's the town administrator, has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen and must be funded.[1763.34] and must be funded. I, my personal take on that, I've always understood that to be what every article is, everything that the board does is subject to appropriation, so to get into one, two, or several articles, I think we're going down a bad path, and so for me, if I could, what makes sense is to put the onus on the administrator to explain what Article 4 is all about, and Article 4 is, remember, there were requests in there that I didn't recommend, that the board recommended, and there were recommendations in there that the FinCom recommended, so this is meant to be an articulation of the departmental operating budgets and what that means. Last year, we had $750,000 in one line, and we didn't talk about it, we talked about it in advance, we said, please look at that, we also said, please look at the Administration budget, and those items passed, so I think there's a way to present it where all parties feel honored, but more importantly, the town meeting members will have as much information in advance as we want our warrant to give them. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let Mary respond, because it started with her...
So are you suggesting, under the operating budget, we would have a table of this budget includes the following new positions?
I think we could do that, you know, we typically have the funding source, given the level of discussion that's taken place, we can add a table, and then everybody can debate the table.
That would do it for me.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
I'm still stuck, thank you, Mr. Chair, or we could conversely condense everything you just said into Article 3, which is the personnel, and then rolls in Article 4, funding everything. It's much more transparent, but either way, you've just given yourself another homework assignment, because I still want to have this discussion in full next week, which means I'd need to see what the appendix looks like, and I'd need, like, to see what a personnel article looks like, and if we don't want to do that, I'm not sure whether I'm going to support the whole budget, to be honest with you.
Which is great, I mean, but the bottom line for the board is, we're going to make a decision, we don't have to see what anything looks like, it's a very simple thing, are we going to have an article for personnel, or are we not going to have an article for personnel? And to Joe's recommendation about putting an appendix together, the board could vote next week, depending on a yes or no, that we want the appendix under Article 4, so what we, how we vote, or what we don't vote, because we don't get our own way, is irrelevant. There's at least two members of the board right now that do not want to see this go into a separate article, and see it that it's going to confuse town meeting, and more importantly to me, again, Finance Committee, maybe they should take over being the Town Administrator, because we have a Town Administrator for a reason, and we pay him to administer the town, we're not hiding anything, we've talked about this for hours, to Mary's point, I agree, we have not talked about these positions as much as we talked about the positions last year, and what Joe just outlined gives full transparency, and then any member of the public or Finance Committee that wants to make an amendment to the budget can make it, and if we sit here now, after all the conversation tonight about amendments, and say that people aren't willing to amend things on town meeting floor, we've gone backwards in the earlier conversation. Larry?
Well, yeah, I'll restate my position, it's up to us to make the articles, not FinCom, so we're clear on that, I think we... And Joe, that's a new proposal, I'm with Mary, I'm comfortable there's a separate table in there, so it clearly explains what we're going for, I'm okay with that as a personnel discussion.
Julie?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Don, anything further? Mary?
Nope.
I'll bring this back for a vote next week, unless a board member wants to, I don't know how much more debate we're going to have next week, other than a vote, so if somebody wants to make a motion to add that, what Joe's asking...
I'll move, we add the table for personnel enhancements, or, you know, to the Article 4, as Joe suggested.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Four one.
Thank you.
Anything further on articles or budget? All set? Town Administrator's report?
Thank you, first, I think board members know, but I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to put on the record my thanks to Bob Lawton, Bob finished up his latest tour of duty in the town of Harwich, and I threatened him by saying I'll find a way to bring him back. On a personal note, I've always considered Bob to be a mentor to me, he graciously accepts that title, and I appreciate all that he does, but he really helped us out this last time, helping out in treasury and collection, so I just wanted to put out there my thanks, and just have, if the board would join me, and those thanks to Bob for what he did over the last several weeks.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Secondly, I'm thrilled to announce that our Great Sand Lake ARPA application has been approved by the reviewers, so the next step, it will go before the Barnstable County Commission, and they've asked me to attend and to put some comments on the record, so I'll keep the board aware of when that happens, but barring any unforeseen circumstances, it looks like we have our ARPA project, and again, that was the Great Sand Lakes Project, nitrogen and other abatements in that area. I want to thank Dan Pelletier, Water Waste Water Superintendent, for his extraordinary work on that, and I know he would offer that, Russ Cleecamp from GHD did great work on that as well. And last but not least, I would be remiss if I didn't wish everybody a very happy St. Patrick's Day, but I would also be remiss if I didn't tell you to enjoy the Feast of St. Joseph, which is Sunday, so enjoy both of those days, and I hope everybody has a great weekend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Selectmen's report, Julie?
I would suggest that the public look at the school committee meeting that was held on, what day, March 9th, it's a four-hour meeting, it's a long one, but if you go past the intro, there's a lot of different conversation there about the Board of Selectmen here in Harwich, and some, I felt some inappropriate comments, but I also think it's important for people to watch it to understand why this board is questioning certain things in the budget, I think most of you know I've always supported the school budget, and I continue to support the school budget, but I also think that this board has every right to ask the questions that we're asking about this budget, that's looking for two new curriculum directors, while we're hearing, this board collectively is hearing from many of our people in town, teachers, special needs teachers, et cetera, questioning the inclusion of two new curriculum directors at $250,000, while special ed and some other assistance aren't being funded in the budget, they remain unfunded, so I'm just putting that out there because I think it's important for everybody to take a look at that and understand that this board is not just concerned about the assessment, as I heard the school committee indicate, that Harwich only cares about the assessment, no, we actually care about our students and our teachers, and we care, we're listening to them, and when we hear our teachers, who are the people in the classroom assisting our children, and are asking for other types of help, we're going to listen all day long, it is not about the specific assessment number, we, as a board, have a responsibility to the students, to the teachers, and to the administrators, but we have every right to ask those questions, we are paying 80% of that budget, and we are listening to the people in our town who are concerned with the way that budget is moving forward, so I just think it's very important, and I think sometimes these things get distorted out in the public, that the board isn't supporting the school, that's not true, we're actually going above and beyond to make sure that the teachers have what they need, so, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Mary?
All set, thanks.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I want to underscore what Julie just said, because Mary wasn't here for the discussion when Scott was here, but just to point out that this was not an event, it's a process, the event was when we changed the agreement to pull the elementary schools out, that was never designed to be the end result of anything. Stephen, before Mary, had brought up the thought that we were heading towards a disparity, actually, we got to 80% sooner than I expected it, we're at the point where we are conducting a school, by the way, they haven't changed the school committee, I mean, the representation for Chatham still is where it was when they had more kids, so it's our money, in our school, there's a foundational part, which is the part I want to change in the minutes, because it's very obscure, but it needs to be stated again, the school needs to have the buildings open, they need to have heat, they need to have electricity, that's independent of how many kids in each community go to them, and we are fronting the bulk of all of that right now, and we never promised anybody that when Mary talked to the school committee, and they got the agreement from two towns to change how they were funding the elementary schools, then we were all done and everything's good, we never said that, we said that this is an unsustainable change, and it is, now having said that, I hope everybody's safe out there today and tomorrow, because, as part of my report, because it looks like it's going to be a pretty brutal couple of days of weather.
Thank you, Don. Larry?
No, Julie, thank you for that discussion, and Don as well, but, you know, we're saying it obvious, we very much support the schools, always have, and always will.
Right.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and to adjourn, all in favor?